One, goodbye.
Thanks. Good morning and welcome to the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee number 11 for 2021. It's our last for the year. All councillors are in attendance and we don't have any apologies this morning. So I might pass to councillor Kunzaman to do the acknowledgement.
Thank you Chair. We Ipswich City Council acknowledge the cultural connection to country and recognise the sovereign and human rights of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Island People and the communities of Ipswich to self-determination, meaningful engagement with local government and shared governance and decision-making.
Thank you councillor. Do any committee members have any declarations of interest in matters on the agenda?
No.
So moving on to item number one, which is business outstanding, and that's the councillor local office space update. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer with regards to the information in front of us? Just noting that this is an update as to where we're at in trying to reconfigure some spaces in the libraries to accommodate for some councillors to meet more closely with their constituents. So I do note that the conclusion of the report does outline that those discussions are still ongoing and that we're working with the councillors particularly in Division Two councillor Johnic and councillor Tully to get an outcome there. And we'll further update the committee as that progresses. So I'll move that report. Do I have a second, Chair? Thanks councillor Johnic. And any discussion? We'll move straight to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. Item number two is just the confirmation of the minutes for the previous committee. I'll move that those be confirmed. Do I have a second, Chair? Thank you councillor Kunzaman. Open that for any discussion. I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. Item number three on the agenda today is the change to Rosewood Library opening hours. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer with regards to this report? I'll move the recommendation that council endorse the proposed changes to the opening hours at the Rosewood Library to be effective from the 4th of January 2022. And councillor Kunzaman will second that. Thank you councillor Kunzaman. I now open that for any discussion.
Thank you Chair. I'm delighted to see that the community of Rosewood and the surrounding areas has sort of really embraced the Rosewood.
Sorry, had the microphone off. Just to say how great it is to see the Rosewood community and the surrounding areas embrace this library. And it's great to see these hours extended from nine o'clock so that it's consistent, seven days a week, sorry, six days a week. So that's great.
Yeah, just further to that, it's great to see that the team were able to find some operational efficiencies so that there were no financial implications to the budget. And a wonderful outcome for our community that they were surveyed, they clearly put their thoughts forward and council considered that and has come back with a really great solution for them to extend those opening hours. It may only be a couple of hours, but it means a lot to the community. So thanks to all of the community who participated in the survey, who gave us that feedback. And I hope you get to enjoy the Rosewood Library for more hours in the coming year and those years ahead as well. So I'll move that to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item number four, the Spark Ipswich Festival 2021 post-event report. The recommendation here is that the report providing the post-event reporting of the inaugural Spark Ipswich Festival 2021 be received and its contents noted. I'll move that. Do I have a second, Chair? Thank you councillor Kunzaman. Would anyone like to speak to any of the relevant council officers associated with the event? You'd like to speak to a council officer?
Yes please.
Thank you. Ms Gregory will join us at the lectern.
Good morning Carly Gregory, manager of marketing and promotions branch.
To you ma'am.
Yep. Thank you Ms Gregory. Thank you for the programme. It was incredibly well received within Ipswich, but also out of Ipswich, was my view. And to see these numbers clarifies that and puts something there. I was just wondering, obviously this is the first time and we always look at how we can, I guess, leverage of what we've done. What's been the feedback from some of the local community groups and music groups and stuff that were part of that? Because we had a lot of local artists and a lot of local people involved.
We did. Like you said, it was really well received. I think the team is incredibly proud, and as a city we're proud, that we actually ran the festival, given that so many festivals were cancelled this year due to COVID. We have joked, we've sort of slid between, you know, snap lockdowns all year to be able to deliver these, which is fabulous. We had a target of 30,000 attendees for this, you know, given that it was a COVID year. So to hit 33, and that is conservative, because as you can imagine, these figures are based on the ticketed events in the festival. And when you think about the visitation that we had for Refraction, for Delight and Pixel, they were all outdoor COVID-designed, you know, events. So I think that's conservative, which is phenomenal. If you think about the economic impact for something like Riverlink Shopping Centre, you know, their restaurants and cafes had done it tough, like all of them in the city. They have beautiful traffic counters and were able to measure that. And they had 22,000 extra attendances to those restaurants and bars during that time. I think the fabulous thing was as well, that continued for them for about 10 days post the festival as well, which is a phenomenal result. So we had lots of anecdotal feedback like that. If you think about community groups, some of our local choirs and music groups, for example Best of British, they were able to share in $12,000 worth of ticketing revenue, just from a one night, which is phenomenal for the size of the events, given that we were so restricted with ticket sales.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks Ms Gregory. I'll open that up for any further discussion. I would just like to put my spin on it. I think that Spark 2021 was a huge success. I made it to, I would say, about 90% of the events and I really immersed myself in it. And it was great to see the community getting involved and just the high praise that they had for council in delivering such a wonderful event. There was lots going on. Events at the same time, there were, it was 11 days, just absolutely jam-packed. So I think that we've heard the community loud and clear that this is something that needs to stick around. The report outlined some of the highlights. The marketing team did an absolutely spectacular job. If we look at what we managed to achieve in terms of our social media reach, I think that it's, you know, more than 200,000 engagements over the course of the Spark Festival, which is huge. So, and it's no surprise that we had so many people from outside the region wanting to come in and participate. So, you know, the local businesses benefited, you know, it was good for building community morale and a wonderful exercise in civic pride and putting our best foot forward and showing the community that, you know, we can deliver on this new model of events management and rolling it out as an organisation. And it's something that I can't wait to see grow next year. I've had lots of feedback from the community. That's all been fed back to the officers and the officers have also received a lot of feedback. So bigger and better next year is the parting comment I want to have about Spark 2021 and congratulate all the officers that were involved. A super stressful environment at times, but that's the nature of events delivery and we really stepped up to do it. So thank you to the entire team for their hard work and contributions.
Just through you Chair, sorry. Just to add to that, obviously the progressive events that were in our region through this festival, I just wanted to congratulate the team again because I'm still hearing such great things from The Little Day Out. I got to a few shows with you and you're at the Civic Centre and it's, you know, Ipswich can entertain and entertain to that next level. And so I'm really proud of that. And I think our team should be proud of that as well. We went above and beyond people's expectations, I feel, in the community. So yeah, bigger and better. Or I'm just really looking forward to next year.
And how perfectly complimentary to the economic development portfolio that you're in charge of as well, you know. There were numbers there, quantitative numbers that suggest that, you know, there was significant, you know, economic impact in, you know, what was an otherwise pretty awful year, considering the COVID impacts. But as Ms Gregory said, it was quite serendipitous that a lot of these events were actually able to go on. And we pivoted and we ensured that it was delivered for the community. But yeah, there was, there was a substantial amount of luck in that and we're so grateful that it ended up that way. So we'll take that one to the vote.
May I say, maybe.
Oh, Mayor Harding, yes.
Thank you Chair. I just want to thank the Queensland Government, in particular Tourism and Events Queensland, who also contributed to the funding of our Spark Festival. Without them, that means that we could do a lot of things that we not normally could have done. And I think it's great, when you look at the figures, that of the 330 artists and art workers, 189 of them were from Ipswich. At a time, in a two-year period where things have been really tough for musicians, performers and anyone in that industry, to have that boost was phenomenal. And to the team, but also everyone involved with this, in the community, planning for this started last year and it was always done to be COVID safe. And to see that, I guess, the plans come to fruition and do so well, even though it was challenging, is a real testament. And I think then the people of Ipswich obviously loved it and so did other people outside of Ipswich. So it's wonderful.
Thank you. With no further discussion, I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item number five this morning, Kids Outdoor Recreation Programme Evaluation. The recommendation here is that the Kids Outdoor Recreation Programme Evaluation Report be received and the contents noted. I'll move that. Do I have a second, Chair? Thank you councillor Kunzaman. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer with regards to the programme? So we'll move straight into discussion and commentary. Would anyone like to open that up?
Just through you Chair, it looks like we need more canoes.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm really glad that that was so successful at colleges and it's such a pretty place of Ipswich as well. And I, yeah, can just imagine that you can get to little nooks and crannies that are gorgeous, that you wouldn't be able to get to in anything else than a boat. So it was great to see the attendance was over capacity by the looks of it. So that's really good to see.
Yeah, great to see lots on the waiting list and lots of interest around this. And in its first year and something that council's becoming increasingly better at is actually surveying the people who are participating in this and getting that real-time feedback. It's not just collecting numbers on participants, it's asking them, how can we improve on this next year? What should we bolster for the following year? So I'm really excited about a programme like this. It really fits in well with our healthy, active Ipswich, which will be a huge focus of 2022 if councillor Johnic and I have anything to say about it. But it's great. It's good to see the community getting out there and getting active and participating in these community, this community programming that Ipswich City Council is responsible for. So again, props to the team. And yeah, let's see how we can shape it to be bigger and better for next year and to get more people down to these events.
We could get a tandem canoe and not capsize together.
I think that if you've got me and the canoe councillor Johnic, there will definitely be capsizing happening. With no further discussion, we'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. Item number six for today's agenda is Community Funding and Support Allocation Status Report, the 1st of July 2021 to the 30th of September 2021. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer? Yes Mayor Harding? Thank you Ms Mattson. While Ms Mattson takes her stand, I think it's appropriate to note that a lot of money has gone out of the door in this first quarter. So a wonderful response for our community and great to see Ipswich City Council, you know, getting that money to those community groups so they can do what they do best.
Agreed. Good morning, Cap Mattson, manager of Economic and Community Development.
Thank you through the Chair. Ms Mattson, I wasn't going to ask so much about the wonderful list of community group names that are here today. But obviously the way that grants are done in council has changed over the years. And I guess the last two years we've had a real focus, a couple of years have had that focus of going to the Grants Office and using Smarti Grants, which is used by the Queensland Government and many, many organisations for doing grants. For someone who hasn't applied for a grant, do you have any advice for them on when they ring the office or email you, what, just to demystify things so they feel more comfortable in applying for grants? Because they're used to just asking their councillor for it.
That is such a good question, Mayor, because people are scared to approach and fill out often what can seem to be a daunting application form. My advice is, yes, call us. Call the Community Funding and Support Office and we will talk you through the process. And in fact, many of our officers have sat on the phone and walked somebody through that application process to explain how that online form works. When there's also computer access issues, we can also help to work around that. So just because you feel like, oh no, that's a bit daunting, doesn't mean that you shouldn't apply. As you can see from the funding that has been distributed just in the first quarter this year, we are actively seeking to distribute those community funds out to the community. So if you are a community group who has a project that you would like some financial support for, my advice would be call us. Talk to either the community funding team or a community development officer and whoever you speak to will direct you to the right person to handle that conversation. And we can help explain whether it's eligible, how it's eligible, who else you can get funding from as well, because it's not just council that provides community funding. And what's the best way to navigate that process? So call us, is I guess my advice.
Thank you. And I know from experience, everyone who I've sent off to there has been very impressed with the service they've received, especially some seniors groups who may not be using the computers have had support. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The recommendation here is that the report concerning the first quarter allocation of council's community funding and support programmes from 1 July 2021 to 30 September 2021 be received and the contents noted. I'll move that. And councillor Kunzaman will second. Yep, we'll open that for discussion and over to you councillor Kunzaman.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank our team for their continuing support for this. It's really good to be able to, when a community group contacts, to just say, just ring and they will give you a hand. That is really important and really effective. But I notice the breadth of the funding that's been given across so many organisations. And it looks to me like there's an element of fairness in that, because we're looking from sport to community capacity, to sheds, to food relief, to whatever. So it's an enormously wide distribution, which I think contributes to the effectiveness of our community groups.
Agreed. Yeah, I guess I want to echo the sentiments of that customer service experience that you get at the Grants Office. It's, you know, it's getting up there with the gold standard that we wish to see rolled out with the customer experience strategy. So yeah, many thanks for the team down there being flexible, ensuring that they get back to our community groups and really assisting, taking a lot of the workload out of our offices and putting it into the Grants Department. And the faith that we have in them is not misplaced. So it's great. We might need to talk about the budget allocation for next year as we go into budget discussions and consider increasing that.
If I may Chair, I think, agreed with you on that point. And also what councillor Kunzaman said, it's great to see such a wide variety from wildlife carers to sporting groups for our community. But just letting people know that obviously it's a competitive process. Not everyone applies, gets one and will work with you. If there are any issues, still feel free to contact your councillor. You know, we certainly will help support, explain the grants process. So still feel free that you can contact your councillor as well.
Thank you. With no further discussion, I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Now before we close the meeting today, I'd just like to move a procedural motion to move outside of standing orders, just to give a little bit of a recap on the committee for 2021, if I may. So I'll move that and I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Now I've been well prepared with an exhausting list of the wonderful achievements that happen within my portfolio. We do have a very vibrant and exciting portfolio. We get to take on lots of those fun experiences like the community events. But we're also very focused on the customer experience that we will continue to develop and get better at as a council as well. So just in reflection, you know, it's been a massive year. We've spoken at length about the impacts of COVID, which impact our committee quite feverishly, because we are delivering on events and we were able to have a really, really successful 2021, considering that we came into it thinking that the impacts of COVID were going to be less this year. And in fact, they were actually more difficult to navigate. So I just want to thank the community and the council officers in managing to navigate that very successfully. We saw the opening of Australia's first dedicated public children's library, which we will all agree is an amazing place to be. The mayor and I were just there this week writing letters to Santa with some of our young people. And we look forward to all of the letters that we'll receive for the Letters of Santa program that we're running from the library over the festive season. We saw 2,680 visitors on opening day alone. Now this was, I guess, a project that the community were very sceptical about, opening the children's library separate to the Ipswich Library flagship that we also have downstairs in Torma Place. But a lot of those worries washed away when they saw the absolute quality that was achieved in the fit out there and the environment that has been carefully curated for our young people in the city and beyond. It's become a huge attractor for lots and lots of young families and a safe space. So the crying babies are okay and there's no librarian shushing you when you walk in with a restless young person. I want to speak specifically to the customer experience and concierge that we were able to deliver, you know, as part of the move to the new building. It's been a great exercise in coming together and reshaping the way that we do our customer service at the front counter. And the wonderful people that work at the front counter always welcome all of our residents with a smile so that they can take out their council business in our gorgeous new foyer of One Nicholas Street. So I just want to thank the team for embracing those changes and really showing the community what we have to offer. And again, it's one of those pockets of the organisation which foreshadows the achievement that we are quite capable of here at the organisation. that we are quite capable of here at the organisation when we put the customer first, when we're considering what the customer experience is. City events, which is probably my favourite thing to brag about as the committee chair, had some amazing highlights, planes, trains and autos, 6,270 attendees. That's absolutely outstanding on what was a pretty rainy and cloudy day. But again, we had some real luck there and the event wasn't rained out. So we were able to host lots of wonderful families and plenty from outside the region. So bringing people into our region and showcasing Ipswich City and bringing economic impact again to our wonderful railway workshops museum, which is grossly underrated and I'm sure councillor Mattson will agree. So to drive interest to that part of North Ipswich is always wonderful. Spark Ipswich, 11 days, 91 event sessions, 16 event locations, 335 artists, more than 33,000 attendees. Another wonderful success that we should be really proud of. The creators of Ipswich, we had our first summit this year and, you know, we're moving closer to 2022 and, you know, another update, another meeting of all of those wonderful creatives in our city. I plan to communicate this with all of the attendees of the Creators of Ipswich Summit, but I think it's really important to acknowledge the appointment of Ms Trina Massey and the energy that she brings to her role as the dedicated contact point for the arts community in Ipswich. And it's been really great for lots of our wonderful arts community to have someone that they can rely on for information, how to navigate the organisation and just use as a sounding board for ideas. Ms Massey comes with such great experience working in cue music in her role before this. So she knows, you know, the struggles of artists and she knows how to help them. So, you know, that was a major promise that we made to the creators of Ipswich, that we would dedicate an FTE to them and we did achieve that this year. So we thank her for her work and, you know, and her continued enthusiasm to the role. The RADA funding, we've distributed more than $40,000, which is amazing. That's local artists getting that $40,000 to do what they do best and perform and bring joy to our city. We've got the cultural strategy addendum, which will be widely communicated with everyone in the coming weeks. And just the change in attitudes around, the mayor and I attended an art opening at the Community Gallery on the weekend and there is this warmth that we've seen emerge in the arts community and this togetherness that didn't necessarily exist. And, you know, when we reflect on Ipswich City Council's role in that, no, we're not to carry the arts community, but we need to be there as an advocate. And I think that, you know, the arts community is slowly recognising that we are committed and that we, you know, we do, we do support them. And, you know, Trina is obviously a testament to that. The community development strategy is also another highlight that I wish to speak to this morning. You know, and I can't count the amount of times that I've used, you know, that line from the strategy that says, you know, hand up, not hand out. And it's empowering the community, it's capacity building. And the Stronger Communities workshops have been hugely successful. We've had that real-time feedback. There have been, you know, potential alterations that can be made, you know, to the subject matter of those workshops moving forward. So we hear our community loud and clear as we go through those workshops and inform, empower and inspire. The active Ipswich strategy was endorsed and councillor Johnic and I have committed to our health kick for 2022. And as members of the alliance, it's a really good opportunity to bring together a lot of the work that exists out there in the community. And again, that's highlighting council's role, that's leaning on that ethos of the community development strategy. It's bringing everyone together, it's ensuring that we're on the same page. So I think that, you know, it'll be a wonderful opportunity to interrogate all things from active transport, infrastructure planning, that hard stuff, that really expensive stuff that we consider in our budget deliberations, all the way through to canoeing for, you know, young people and the activities that that council will continue to put on. So bringing all of that together, you know, is really important and highlighted by mine and councillor Kunselman's appointment to the West Morton Diabetes Alliance and the need for clearer messaging on becoming more active as a city and owning the problem that we have here. As a local government, we have a role to play. So I just want to say, you know, that's just a few of the highlights. And I want to thank our community and our council officers and my fellow councillors for getting around us, for supporting me as the Chair this year. I think that we've got a lot to be proud of, so thank you. And on that, I will move back into standing orders. If I could get a vote on that, all those in favour? Thank you. And there are no notices of motion or matters arising. So I would like to close the meeting today at 10:36 and we'll come back in 15 minutes' time.